That'd be great because I've got them here and all good.
All right, thanks.
You're most welcome. Yes sir, you're most welcome, Mayor Proten.
And I see Ms. Miller, welcome Ms. Miller, thank you for being with us today.
Thank you.
He can't, he's muted.
And Jared, Eddie's not joining us, is that right?
Correct, correct, I think he has no service at all where he's at.
Okay. Stephanie, are we about ready?
I believe we are, Mayor, I'm trying to get one more staff member in, they're having a little bit of technical issue. We have everyone ready to begin, just a reminder, we will go live here in about thirty seconds. And please have your video turned off if you are not actively participating in the item, just to keep our screens as clean as possible with the council members. And we will go live now, you're good, Mayor.
Welcome to the business meeting for this week for the City Council. And have, we have with us today Ms. Priscilla Miller, who's going to be saying our invocation for us, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Nelson. Good afternoon, I'll be signing and speaking our prayer today. Please pray with me. Beloved God, we come to you today, you are our divine leader, our divine protector and divine teacher. Guide all our leaders who make difficult decisions for the benefit of our beautiful city of Amarillo. Protect all our police, our firemen, and all who are in need of your care. Teach us your ways, O Lord, and grant us your wisdom and your grace. All these things we ask and pray through our Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, what a beautiful prayer, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
May God bless.
And to you also. We have two proclamations that we have for this week. And the first one is a proclamation with regard to Richard Wagner III. And I would call on Councilmember Frida Powell to read that proclamation for us.
Yes, Mayor, I'd be happy to do that. Whereas the city of Amarillo in December nineteen seventy-nine approved an ordinance creating a committee to address concerns unique to citizens with disabilities. And whereas the Advisory Commission, now known as the Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities, has worked to promote public awareness and accessibility services. And whereas the city of Amarillo in nineteen eighty-seven, under the advisement of the Advisory Committee, created a door-to-door public transportation service for people who could not use the regular Amarillo City Transit Service. And that service is now known as SECT Trans, provides over fifty-two thousand passenger trips a year. And whereas for forty years, Richard Wagner III has been involved with the Advisory Committee as a member, vice chairman and vice, I'm sorry, vice chairman and chairman, attending two hundred and twenty-three meetings and serving as a tireless advocate for people with disabilities and a champion for accessible public transportation. Now therefore, we Mayor and City Council members of the city of Amarillo do hereby thank Richard Wagner III for his tireless work on behalf of all of the citizens of Amarillo in giving voice to issues of concern to individuals with disabilities. Given under our hand and seal of office this twenty-ninth day of September twenty twenty, the Honorable Mayor Ginger Nelson, Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith, council members. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Powell. We do celebrate, and most importantly, we thank Mr. Wagner for the example and the hours of service that he's given, both through our city, but most importantly to those citizens who might not have otherwise had access to some of the things the city provides. So, Mr. Wagner, I'm sorry you couldn't be with us today, but on behalf of the entire city, we do want to say thank you. And we hope you'll be able to watch this and that you'll feel greatly honored and much appreciated by those of us who are here celebrating you today. Anything else, Council, that you want to add to that? Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am?
This is Stephanie, and I believe Marita Walitz Riley has a statement to read.
Wonderful. Okay, Marita.
Mayor and council members, I spoke with Richard Wagner yesterday, and he asked that I thank you for this honor. And he is sorry that he cannot attend in person, but he is very proud of his forty years of service to the city of Amarillo and as a member of the Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities. The Advisory Committee on Thursday will also honor him by reading the proclamation again at our, at the meeting. And I would personally like to express my gratitude and admiration for Richard. He has truly made a difference in people.
Thank you. Thank you, Marita, we appreciate that and agree with you. Anyone else? Our next proclamation is National Suicide Prevention Month. And I would call again on Councilmember Frida Powell to read that for us.
Yes, Mayor, I'll be happy to do that. Whereas National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month is intended to help us learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, each year more than forty-one thousand people die by suicide. And whereas suicide is the tenth leading cause of death among adults in the United States and the second leading cause of death among people aged ten to twenty-four. And whereas the city of Amarillo is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, pack leaders, police officers, parents, and partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local organizations and national organizations are on the front line of a battle that many still refuses to discuss suicide in public as suicide and mental illness remain too taboo to speak on. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. Now therefore, we Mayor and City Council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty twenty as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. In Amarillo, and urge all citizens to recognize this important month, given under our hand and seal of office this twenty-ninth day of September, the Honorable Mayor Ginger Nelson, Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith, council members. And Mayor, on that note, I would just like to say that, that in regards to national suicide prevention, we should all try to be kind to people on a daily basis because we never know what people are facing. And sometimes just keeping the same tone of voice and calmness when we're talking to others could make a difference in someone's life at the end of the day. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Agreed, thank you for that, Frida. I know we have some guests here with us today, and so I would hand it to Casey Stotin. Casey, who do we have with us today?
Yeah, so we have some wonderful colleagues, Mackenzie Ellis from Canyon ISD. She serves on the Panhandle Suicide Prevention Coalition. Jennifer Potter, she is with Family Support Services. She is our new lost team coordinator and a member of the Amarillo Area Suicide Review Team. Jason Riddlesberger has just been instrumental in our community. A member of all of those organizations is now serving with community development. And I think that is our team, if anybody else is here, then we'd love to see you. And I don't know, Mackenzie, would you like to say a couple of words for us?
Absolutely, I never turn down a time to speak, so. So I'm just so appreciative to be a part of this and to be a part of a city who is willing to recognize the importance of suicide prevention. I just think that that's, that is amazing. You know, it's always been something that has been there, but I think with COVID, it's really shed that much more of a light on people's mental health. You don't have to have a full-on diagnosis to be able to take care of your mental health. And so I just think that that's just really important as we continue forward. And just thank y'all for even recognizing this, I think that that's really awesome. The more conversations we have, the more we get to fight against that stigma. Hopefully it's not a taboo anymore, but more of just it's something where it's a part of regular conversation that people have.
Well said, Mackenzie, well said. Casey, anything else to add?
We really are excited about the work that's happening. Jennifer Potter is our new lost team coordinator. So we'll be partnering with first responders here in our community to have new resources for survivors of suicide. So we'll have some hope and some resources that we'll be able to provide very early on in their journey, and we're really excited about that team. The law enforcement and first responder agencies in our community have been, have been overwhelmingly supportive. And so we're really excited to begin that work, and I think Jennifer is the exact right person to, to do that. And so I think that we're really glad to get started, and so it'll be good.
Thank you, Casey. And thank you to Jennifer and Mackenzie for joining us, of course, Jason also. We appreciate the work that you're doing out in the community. This is an important issue, even though it's emotionally very hard and it's hard to talk about, all the more reason for us to give it prominence and space in our community to talk about. So thank y'all for being willing to be heroes and bringing it into our community focus. And, and we hope that you have the support that you need to do the job. It's a hard job, but we, we do support you. Anything else, Council, that you want to comment or add to that?
Mayor, I wanted to add, just in, as we thank our first responders and partnering to help reach out to our community and assist the community, just for us to be reminded, for us to reach out to our first responders as well. And just noticing that the number of increase in suicides among police officers, especially this year, is just incredibly tragic. And so just as a community, just opportunities we have on a daily basis when we see police officers out and about, just a kind word, a thank you, just, it goes a long ways. And I would just say that it was, it's pretty sobering hearing that statistic on the in-the-age group of ten to twenty-four, that suicide is the second leading cause of death. I mean, that, that is such a tragedy. And I just appreciate you guys' work in reaching out to our community to address this topic.
Thank you. Casey, you have something you want to add?
Yes, you'll see some billboards around town. The Coalition has worked on, and with communications assistance, we have worked on some billboards. And so you'll start seeing some billboards around town that have the, the suicide hotline, their text line. And so that's a really great resource that we have here in our community. And so, so that's certainly a resource that will be available. And then the team, Mackenzie and her team, the team at AISD, they have bracelets that also have the suicide text line. And so just getting that information out, that there are resources, that there is hope, that it's okay to talk about, and it's okay to not be okay, and it's okay to say that, and it's okay to talk about, is just so very important.
Good, thank you very much, appreciate all of you being here and the work that you do in our community. We'll move on then to the agenda. Item one A is a coronavirus update, and I'll hand it to the City Manager.
Well, good thing we have Casey Stotin already on and queued up, because I'm going to go ahead and hand it to her for a coronavirus update. And we definitely have some news to share today that you're probably already aware of, Casey, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you, so I'll give yesterday's numbers, and our team is working on the data entry. And so I'll kind of explain some of that in just a, just a, just a minute. So as of yesterday, there were seven thousand seven hundred ninety-nine cases of COVID-19 in Potter-Randal County, four thousand eight hundred eighty-one in Potter County, two thousand nine hundred and eighteen in Randall County. We have a total of six thousand four hundred and seventy-four recoveries, again as of yesterday, and one hundred and eight deaths reported in Potter-Randal Counties, again as of yesterday. That leaves us with a total of one thousand two hundred and seventeen active cases. And it is also important to note that each of the cases do represent a unique individual. The rolling seven-day average positivity average for Potter and Randall Counties is down to ten percent. And the positivity rate at the drive-through is slightly up to twenty-three point two three percent. Today's Panhandle RAC, the Regional Advisory Council Hospitalization Percentage is at eleven point nine zero percent. And the, today's report card will reflect a significant number of positives that were reported to us through the TDCJ's NEAL unit. So there will be just over a thousand cases that were reported from the NEAL unit. We received those late yesterday, and our team is completing the data entry. So that report card will be just a few minutes late, and that's why I don't have the exact totals for today. But we do have over a thousand cases that were reported to us from the NEAL unit. The local hospitalization data includes sixty-nine hospitalized patients at our two hospitals, for a percentage of five point seven percent. The total adult bed utilization is at seventy-seven point five percent. ICU utilization is at eighty-five point five percent. And ventilator utilization is at thirty-nine percent. The public health drive-through does remain operational. Patients can call three seven eight six three zero zero, and our call takers will screen and direct them to the test site. The updates on the dashboard remain operational as well. So we have the new numbers, the new RAC positivity rate at the hospitals, the hospitalization rate, and the school data, and so that, those numbers, we hope are helpful to our community. Prevention efforts such as masking, flu vaccines, hand washing, social distancing, staying home when you're sick, remain critical. Also want to thank the staff, the Public Health Department, our first responders, healthcare workers. As we move into October, you know, this pandemic, we saw our first cases March eighteenth. We're now moving into October, so we know their work has been long and it has been hard. And so we appreciate all of the work that has gone on as we work to fight COVID-19. Also want to thank our community, it has certainly been hard for them as well. And so we want to thank all of the work that our community has done. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Council, do you have any questions for Casey?
I see on the thousand that are coming from the NEAL unit, do we know like a time period that those thousand represent? Is that, are they currently within like an initial week of testing? Is it over a two- or three-week time period? And kind of related to that, where do they primarily have their, their tests processed?
So all of those tests were conducted on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of September. And their tests are conducted in, through their, that prison system. And so they have, you know, it's, it's a system all to its, all to itself. So they have the capacity to process their own tests.
And so they did a global testing, Casey, they tested the entire population?
Yes, ma'am.
What is their total population?
So we received a little over, right at, right at fifteen hundred, maybe like fourteen ninety-seven total tests. And again, we are working through those spreadsheets. The way that it came in, there were, there were lots of hidden fields and everything. And so we're working through the, the Excel spreadsheets. So I'll be able to have more finite numbers for you.
Are those one thousand cases included in the eleven point nine percent RAC number?
Well, they, they wouldn't be only if they're hospitalized. And so really, the, those community numbers wouldn't really affect the hospitalization, the RAC's hospitalization number so much because it doesn't take into account total cases in the community.
Okay. Are there, are any of those 1,000 people hospitalized and affecting that 11.9% number? That's how I should have phrased the question.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Although they do sometimes bring prisoners or detainees, residents to our hospitals. So they can, they just don't in this, haven't in this case yet. And from what I understand, an extremely low percentage of those positives are actually symptomatic.
Right, according to a press release that was published by the Neil Unit, very few of the, of those individuals were symptomatic. So, and we haven't heard from the hospitals that they have inmates.
Any other questions, counsel?
But they would, if those, if those people needed hospital care, they would go to our hospitals.
So Casey, again, why are our numbers continuing to increase as, you know, within the last couple of weeks?
So, you know, just, there's just a wide range of reasons, lots of exposure. Again, we're, we're now about three weeks after Labor Day, but we do have, you know, lots of gathering with, and, and the way that exposure happens is it doesn't necessarily happen linearly, it happens more exponentially. So if one person exposed, is sick, and they expose two or three people who get sick, and then those two or three people expose two or three more people, like that exposure rate happens exponentially as opposed to linearly. If that, I don't know if linearly is a word, but, but it's, it's not, it's not in a line, it's more in that curve up. And so that's, that's one of the reasons why we're seeing more cases is because we have more potential for exposure with more people moving around more possible points of exposure.
Other than the Neil Unit, Casey, do you have hotspots in the city? Or they're just kind of everywhere, everybody exposing each other?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel?
I think the follow-up question on, on your question, mayor, about at the Neil Unit, out of, so it sounds like the entire population was tested because it wasn't symptomatic people, because very few people were symptomatic. And so how many current detainees are at the unit? Was that the 1,497? Is that the total population?
So, and, and again, I'm sorry, I don't have all of the data points that we would like to have. We will certainly request more information, but, but to my understanding, we had a total of 1,497 test results sent to us. Again, we're working out the details of all of the spreadsheets that were sent to us. And then we will also make a phone call out to the Neil Unit to make sure that we have all of the information.
I think just for reference sake, they tested everybody there, not just employees and everyone. So of that 1,497, you know, I don't know what their employee role is, 100-ish, maybe a little more.
And I don't believe that that included the employees.
Oh, it didn't?
We have not received the employee information yet.
Okay. Well, councilmember Hayes, I apologize for incorrect information. Thanks for correcting me, Casey.
Sorry. So that info, the state health department who then sends it to us, and they have not sent this, the employee information yet.
So was the testing done at the directive of the governor? Or kind of what, what initiated them doing a test of the entire population?
I don't know that. We can ask.
So I know like at some point, like with our nursing facilities, assisted living, there, there were directives that we needed to test on a certain cycle and get that information. And so just wondering what had initiated, if it was part of a directive out of the governor's office, or if there were concerns of something?
We don't have that information.
Any other questions for Casey? Casey, thank you. Mr. City Manager, do we have any other reports on coronavirus?
No, ma'am, we do not. That is all we have, unless there's any further questions.
Mayor, last, last week I had requested an, an update on local facilities or doctors that were prescribing the hydroxychloroquine after there had been seven states that had lifted the ban on the, on that treatment and that the state of Texas does not have a ban on that. Wanting to see kind of where we are on the update on, on that information.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I, I don't have any information for you unless Casey has something. We will work to get that as quickly as we can.
So, and it, the information that I have from the Texas Medical Board said that they don't prohibit the drug, but they don't, but like the Texas Medical Association doesn't recommend it. And so they, they recommend, they actually recommend against the prescribing of hydroxychloroquine. So while, so the Texas Medical Board doesn't explicitly prohibit it, they recommend that a medical provider use their medical judgment in the prescribing of that medication. And then the Texas Medical Association has, has other information that they provide to the physicians recommending against the use of the medication. And the FDA in June revoked the emergency authorization permitting the, the use of hydroxychloroquine to treat certain patients. So I don't know which physicians do and which physicians don't, but I think that certainly the physicians are, are able to use their own medical judgment if they decide to provide that medication or not. And in Texas, it says that they don't prohibit the use of that, that drug.
Casey, if I could get a copy of that, because the statement I have that the Texas Medical Board released on September the 8th, stated that the Texas Medical Board clarified that it had never prohibited doctors from using hydroxychloroquine, but affirmed its warning not to tout the drug as a cure. So they had been very clear about saying, we have no cure, but that it absolutely was an acceptable treatment in the state of Texas and had never been banned, nor had been stated discouraged from using it, that, that it was a doctor's discretion. But, you know, I, I read that very, very differently, that it was not stating doctors being advised not to recommend it. And certainly, but that's not our position to take anyway, is trying to get information for our citizens to know what their options are locally. And so I don't know how we would access that information, requesting doctors that are using that treatment, of just knowing there is no restriction in the state of Texas.
I'll certainly send you the information that I have from the Texas Medical Association, and then we can, we can work internally on the additional request.
Thank you. Any other questions for Casey or the city manager on this topic? Okay, thank you, Casey. The next item on the agenda is item 1B, the, which is a report from Dr. Walter Windler of West Texas A&amp;M University on the Cultural Foundation of the Texas Panhandle. Dr. Windler, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you and the council. Thanks to all of you for your attention. With me today is Mark Hodges, who is the president of the Texas Panhandle Historical Foundation, which oversees and operates the play Texas, our, our, the longest-running and largest outdoor play in the history of the world, from my perspective. And also Will Miller, who is the president, or the chairman, one of the two, or both, of the Panhandle Plains Historical Museum and the society, which I see interchangeably. But we have, have been considering now for some time, the opportunity to combine the, in a sense, the resources and power of the Texas Panhandle Historical Foundation and the Panhandle Plains Historical Museum into an entity where each group maintains its, its independence. But also we work together, along with Texas A&amp;M University, and also with Texas Parks, who oversee the Paladour Canyon. Carter Smith is the executive director there, to see if there's not some ways to consolidate and to pronounce more loudly the Texas Panhandle through the play and the, the museum, which together are, I think, tremendous assets to this region and are mutually supportive of each other, all four of those entities. And of course, the, the local municipalities and county governance and so on and so forth, all of us working together to pronounce as loudly as we can the, the, the history, the proud history of the Texas Panhandle and its contributions, indeed, its contributions to the, to the state of Texas and our surrounding region and other states here on the high plains. So we have been in discussions, we're in the process of the, developing the paperwork. I just sent back in another draft of comments to the attorneys in College Station who are working on this, from the Texas A&amp;M University system, to help us organize this. But what we will do is both boards will remain intact. And then we're going to create a new board, and this sounds like a terrible bureaucracy, but I don't think it will be, create a new board that will help guide and direct and advise how these organizations can work together. It will be a board, we have, both of these boards are excellent. This will be a board that more generally represents the state of Texas. We think the foundations of the Texas Panhandle are not just important to the Panhandle, but have value to people who want to understand the history and value of the Texas Panhandle to the larger state of Texas. In other words, we want to toot our horn more loudly, beat our drum, and let people know that we're here, we've been here for a long time, and we want to continue to make our presence known and the value that we add to the state of Texas. So the primary kind of organizational, it's not really a shift, it is a little bit of a shift. We plan on hiring one executive director to work to lead both of these organizations, which we believe we can. It may require some, some juggling of existing responsibilities, but we believe we can do that. And we will create an incentive package for this executive director that will encourage the development of a better census at both the play and the museum, number one. And number two, maybe the order is reversed, to help us with fundraising for both the museum and the play. A museum has a very good endowment, but still is, I would say, significantly subsidized by the university. And that's fine, we're glad of it, it's a, it's a good thing. On the other hand, the, the play is, and I don't say this in a disparaging way, but it's really a hand-to-mouth operation. The play, the sale of tickets and so on, provides the resources necessary to pay staff and so on and so forth. We're hoping to enhance both through this combined and more sympathetic effort with all of these organizations to draw more people to these events and indeed to visitation in, in Amarillo Canyon and, and our region. We're not asking for anything from the city. We want to just share it with you because these, we think these developments and this new organization called the Cultural Foundations of the Texas Panhandle, with a board of, of seven members, there'll be a few local members, but a good number of the members will be from the major metropolitan areas of the state. And we're working on the membership right now. But our intention again is to trumpet more loudly the Texas Panhandle and its contributions and benefits and attractiveness to, to the state of Texas. So that's what we're working on. And Mark and, and Will are here. By the way, I will tell you that it was with some trepidation that I floated this idea out to the boards. I know both boards reasonably well, and I serve on the, on the Texas Board, on the, on the Play Board, TPHF. The organizations, like any organization, they develop a culture and a life of their own. And it's not so much that they're resistant to change, but they have a tradition and a pattern, and it's difficult sometimes to try new ideas. So it was with some trepidation that we, we forwarded this out. But I'm happy to report that both boards unanimously approved this concept as a positive step into the future to, to engender a greater strength for both of these entities, the two primary entities, plus the Paladour Canyon and State Parks. We want to find ways to integrate these all more neatly. And of course, all of this, as providence would have it, benefits West Texas A&amp;M University and both the, the communities of Amarillo and Canyon. And in the last few years, I think, over some period of time, a decade or more maybe, there has been a, I hate to say a waning influence, but there, there, maybe it's the, the change of bus tours and some of the other impacts that have caused there to be less interest in, in these, these opportunities here in the Panhandle. And we want to change that, and we're going to work to change that. So with that, I'll stop. And if Mark or Will, if either of you have anything to add, or if any of you have questions, we'd be pleased to try to entertain those. And again, thanks for the opportunity. I always appreciate the opportunity to come before the council and share ideas and so on. I'm WT proud, and WT is the Panhandle for me, and so is Amarillo. So it all works together very nicely. We appreciate it.
Wasn't it convenient? We were still meeting by Zoom. You didn't even have to leave the WT campus to be with us.
By the way, you know, people complain about Zoom meetings and everything, not me. I'm, I'm okay with them. I, they do provide a kind of efficiency and the opportunity. As a matter of fact, I was meeting with a potential board member the other day, and we did it by Zoom. You just, you get a little bit more looking in people's eyes, even if it's through a camera, it's just a little bit more telephone. Not quite as good as in person, but it's a lot easier.
Yeah, it is. Mark, do you have comments?
Sure. Well said, Dr. Windler. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the council today. And the, since the early beginnings of the Texas Panhandle Heritage Foundation in the early 60s, in the outdoor musical drama of Texas, the foundation in West Texas, what at that time was West Texas State University, and is today West Texas A&amp;M University, has, has had a very close, long-term collaborative relationship. And it's, it's, it's been a great relationship and beginning a new chapter in this long-term relationship and adding to it the Panhandle Plains Historical Museum is exciting. And, and we believe just a win-win-win for us all. So certainly, this will provide some opportunities for us to create some efficiencies and to collaborate on a much broader scale than ever before, thus expanding, again, and enhancing our presence here in the Panhandle. So I believe the possibilities are limitless. Again, our board is fully on board. And, you know, the possibilities are limitless for current and future staff. staff, faculty, uh, students at WT to create a, a very new and exciting way to preserve and share of the culture and history of the Texas Panhandle. So, uh, you know, it's, again, it's, appreciate the opportunity allowing us to share with you today.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Miller?
Hello, thank you. Uh, for the Society, the Panhandle Plains Historical Society, we just held our 99th annual meeting last week. So 99 years, we're knocking on 100 years. And it's been a great 99 years. And this is an opportunity for us to really start to look outside and see what we need to look like for the next 100 years. And, um, as Dr. Weller mentioned, this was a, I was not particularly excited about this concept initially, but I think once we got into it, no doubt about it, it's going to be something very good for all of us collectively. I appreciate Dr. Weller's desire to really enhance the stature of both organizations. Sometimes we feel like we're so far away from everything. Um, and, but he's willing, he wants to draw us into the state. And we have the largest collection, we're the largest historical museum in the state. So it's no, no small thing. And so we were looking forward to it, our board is obviously behind it. And we're looking forward to, to the next step here. So, uh, we appreciate the invitation and thanks for Dr. Weller bringing this idea to us.
Couple of questions for these, uh, leaders in our community who are bringing such a innovative and novel change to, to very traditional organizations. Uh, I wonder if y'all have any comments or questions for them?
I just had a comment on, um, linking together what the potential for that is. And certainly seeing from the convention and visitors bureau, these are huge attractions for tourism to our area. And the culture that you were defining and preserving it, it is, um, a big magnet to our area. And so it is important not just to protect our history, it's also important to protect our economy and continue drawing in and making, um, every effort we can to share our, our culture with the rest of the country, even internationally. And, uh, you know, people really like our background. They, they like our history, we're very interesting. You know, there's just lots of movies and everything that star our culture. And so, um, really appreciate all of your organization's effort in preserving it for, for our community and, um, uh, society at large.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, I was just going to say that we, uh, we had a very interesting meeting, uh, with, uh, it was a Zoom meeting with Larry Gatlin, uh, who has a play that he would like us to produce, uh, and it's a little, maybe a little rough around the edges. And I say that as he was here and he'd make some smart comment and I'd make one back to him. But, but, uh, I think there's opportunities to expand. I'm also very interested, I know there was a time when the Amarillo Symphony, uh, maybe the Amarillo Ballet, maybe the Amarillo Opera performed in the Canyon. I think this is a huge lost opportunity to extend the seasons into the spring and the fall and have weekend events where it might be three different performances on a weekend. Someone can come to town, do these performances and see something that they can't see anywhere else in three nights. Opera, ballet, symphony and a play, maybe four nights. Uh, and, and, and see those in one place in a, in a remarkable physical, uh, surrounding of the canyon. Uh, there, there's nothing like it. Uh, and it could be, I think, a tremendous draw. And I would like to see that happen, plus a stronger integration with the university and with our theater programs and so on. I just, there's a lot of opportunity, just a tremendous opportunity.
I'd like to make a statement about both of these facilities. The museum, first, I visited museum several times over the years. And it's a wonderful, I didn't realize it was the largest. I knew it was one of the largest, but that's great. You have a lot to display there. And then about the play, it's a wonderful, uh, attraction for this area. I'm all for tourism to this area. And, and I know none of you here would believe this, but I went to the very first play. I don't know what year that was. What are you, what are you laughing about, Walter Weller? What was the first year?
Do you know, Mark, Mark, do you know what the first year was?
I believe it was sixty, sixty-one or sixty-two.
Well, I was there and since then, I've probably been to half of the performances. And I know this year's an unusual year, but hopefully we'll be back to a usual year and, uh, bringing all kinds of people to the, to the Panhandle. I've been in the real estate 40 years and anytime I'm working for, for a client that's coming from out of town during the summer months, I'll tell them about this play and encourage them to go to it. And many of them do that and they thoroughly enjoy it. So it's a wonderful thing that takes place and I'm glad you're thinking about ways to make this continue. So congratulations, I'm all for it.
Thank you, Howard. By, by the way, uh, and Mark, you may want to say a word about this. There have been, uh, I'm calling rumors, uh, you know, that, that Texas Play was going on, that Texas Play is not going under, that, you know, that it's never going to come back. It's, it's coming back. As a matter of fact, we're all but selling tickets already, um, with the hopes that things will be in this, in a, in a circumstance whereby we can, um, uh, loft the play next year. And I, and I believe I, I'm hopeful that we will be able to do that. Um, but Mark, you might just say a word about where we are in terms of getting ready for the next season.
Sure, be, be happy to. Of course, COVID caught us at a very vulnerable time. We were, because our year ended September 30th. So caught us right in the middle of, of planning the 2020 show. And, and then when, uh, COVID really, uh, came on board and, uh, changed a lot of things, uh, the canyon was closed. And, uh, so we were forced into a situation where we had to cancel this, the show. This would have been the 55th season would have been. So we had to cancel the show, uh, refund tickets and, and all the monies that we had, uh, had accumulated at sales and such at that time. Some people were, were generous enough to just move those tickets over or donate it to the show. But anyway, uh, it was vulnerable. We had to make some really tough decisions and cut expenses to the bare bones because that is, it is, uh, where most of our revenues come from. Uh, it's the show and the revenues associated with that. So just, uh, had to make some tough decisions, uh, but without question, uh, we're very viable. Uh, we do have as well, we have a, a small endowment fund as well. But, uh, we are in the process of, uh, beginning plans for the 2021 season. Uh, don't know exactly what that's going to look like, just like we don't know about a lot of things as, uh, you know, Hightown and, and baseball and a lot of those things next summer. Uh, but we, we are a hundred percent on board with, uh, moving forward with the show and are making plans, uh, for that, uh, even today. So, uh, we, we look forward to seeing, seeing you all out, out at the canyon. Again, we are certainly, uh, in the process of raising needed funds, uh, as well, just to get things cranked up. But, uh, we're excited about, uh, the 51st, uh, show, 51st year of Texas and, uh, look forward to, uh, seeing all of you out at the canyon and theater.
Well, we do appreciate the time that you guys are spending working on this project. It's a big lift to make this kind of change. But if things aren't changing, then things aren't growing. So sometimes that means you're having to make big changes and we appreciate the sacrifices that you're making, Mark and Will, to lead the organization. And Dr. Weller, we appreciate the vision that you bring to everything that you touch. So thank you for doing that for these two organizations and we appreciate WT and what it does to support and keep the museum going, but now adding into the play and the development of Paladoro Canyon as a tourism draw. So it's all very important and we see tons of potential. We're behind you and we appreciate the time you made to be with us today.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate, uh, your good work too, especially in these challenging times. I'm very thankful for it.
Thank you. We're grateful to be doing it as a team to benefit the city. Okay, next thing on the agenda then is just city council reports. Um, first, starting with Environmental Task Force from Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. The Environmental Task Force met this last week. Had a very good meeting. I think we may have missed a meeting or two here during COVID, but we're back in, in business. And, uh, the, uh, there's a lot of different things that the Environmental Task Force could consider, but they figured out they needed to focus more on, on a couple of things and they're, they're big enough. One of them is composting and the other is water conservation. So, uh, in the area of composting, there's, uh, two pilot projects that have been started by this task force. And, uh, both of them are making the effort of diverting waste from the landfill. Each thing that can be diverted from a landfill, that's, that's good. The first, uh, of the two pilot projects is a public-private partnership with High Plains Food Mine, where the city collects their food waste and uses the materials to enhance the compost program. So, uh, I understand the, uh, High Plains Food Mine has some food that is not used and so it would fit into the compost pile. The compost pile is, is coming along. It's not quite ready to the point it should be, but it will in the near future. And maybe even to the point that, that things from that could be sold to someone. Maybe not for a lot of money, but, but it's preventing, uh, things from going to our landfill. Uh, the second partnership is with the Greenways Pid, in which they're, all their grass clippings are collected, uh, for use in the compost program. And so that's, that's quite a bit of, of grass. And if this, uh, if this pilot program works, the intent would be to get others that are in the business of putting lawns and grass to add to this, that it could then significantly decrease the amount going to the landfill. Uh, so both of those are pilot projects and they're watching very closely. And in the meetings we've had, we've discussed both these projects at length. The second, uh, area that they've chosen to work on is water utilities and trying to create ways to save, uh, to use, save water. They hadn't made any decisions yet, but they're investigating it. And, uh, hopefully don't see water running down the gutters a lot. See it probably too much, but, uh, they'll be studying that. And then the last thing I want to mention, the, this is a task force and it is to sunset in December. And the, uh, task force would like to ask the council, put it on their agenda and extend the, the life of this task force. They're, they're having good discussions and it's going to be beneficial for the city. So, uh, we could get that put on the agenda in the near future. That's all I have, that's just questions.
Would you clarify that again, the, the sunset deadline for this committee?
It's sometime in December. I don't have the exact date.
So of this year, and so do we know how long this has been going and why that one was set for a sunset, Mr. City Manager?
I know it was put into place, uh, by the previous council, uh, prior to y'all's election. I believe, do you have that information? Because I do not know off the top of my head, uh, why it was set to sunset.
I don't know. From what I understand, it was set for a two-year period and that's the typical of the length that this task force was for.
And we have extended it here. I know we've done that, but I don't, I don't, I don't understand. I don't know the reason for the two years that were selected.
I don't either.
We can find that information and get it for you, uh, Councilmember Hayes.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I would ask the city manager to put this on your list of things to be included on a future agenda, probably around November when we do board appointments, might be a good logical time for us to add that. I do think in general, it's a good practice. Every board and commission should have a, a timeframe attached to it. You know, we've said more than once, we have so many boards and commissions. Are they all on task? Are they all accomplishing a mission? And I think sunsets are a good way to revisit, um, piece by piece rather than the whole chunk of them at once, whether or not they're on task and actually accomplishing something. So we can have that discussion at that time.
I will set up a, uh, opportunity for council either, and I'll obviously do this in consultation with you, Mayor, but, uh, uh, either prior to the day, uh, where we consider board appointments or earlier in the meeting where we consider board appointments, uh, to consider, uh, for council to, uh, consider, uh, the extension of the, uh, commission for the, uh, existence of the Environmental Task Force.
There's no, I don't hear, she may know, or the history.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I do not know the entire history. I know that it's been extended before and it was for a two-year period. And so, um, if it pleases the council, we'll just prepare that as a future agenda item. And we can have the chair, uh, of the Environmental Task Force come and give you an update at that time as well, if that would be helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect.
And here kind of to address, um, your point on kind of the bigger picture as opposed to just this one particular board, that this has been a topic we have discussed over the last two or three years on just the, a system of review for sunsetting. And so, um, maybe, uh, Mr. City Manager, if, if, uh, you know, a proposal could be brought before council on how we're going to look, try and look at reviewing all these boards. It's again, how many we have, you know, breaking it up in blocks at a time or something to review them. Um, we, we need some sort of a process to review rather than just all of them at one time when we start making board appointments in the fall.
We'll absolutely get that on, on a future agenda and I'll bring you, uh, uh, best practices and recommendations for ways forward and options. So you'll be able to consider and modify all that and, and do it the way that this, that you want.
Okay. The next report is Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Advisory Committee and that is our same report, reporter, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. The Pedestrian Bicycle Safety Committee met this last week. And, uh, I think we may have missed one or two meetings, but been pretty regular about meetings because we can get by Zoom. And so I want to tell you some things that they've been considering. The possibility of a bike path on Ninth Street from Culture to Medipark. What we're, the big picture, what we're trying to do is connect the dots, connect the paths from, from different areas through the city. We've got the Rock Island Rail Trail that goes from Seventh and Crockett to Culture. And we would like to figure out a way to extend that to Sanci because Sanci has a, a bike path that many people use. But also going through the medical center and over to Ninth. And so that's being studied, haven't got an answer there yet. Uh, and then, uh, the committee was made aware of the, what's going on at John's And then the, the committee was made aware of the, what's going on at John Steff Park, that we've applied for a grant to make some changes in that park. And they had already been discussing before you knew about that, about needing a way to get people from Puckett subdivision over to the park. There's not a good way to do that, maybe the type thing that we have on Georgia, that was just the Hawk that was installed, might be an interest. So we're going to follow that if we get that grant. They'd like to get a way to get from Puckett over there for pedestrians and bikers. And then another thing that we studied, we had the police department come and rapport on, on accidents, either bike or pedestrian accidents, whether there were people killed or injured. And they did that, and quite a few accidents were taking place on Emerald Boulevard. So we decided we needed to get ways to cross Emerald Boulevard, which there's really not good ways to do that. And that happens to be a TexDOT road, because it's a major highway. So we presented those ideas to TexDOT, and they were already considering needing to make changes in that area. And so they're moving forward with our encouragement from our committee to do that, and probably plans are expected to be completed soon and constructed is to be expected to begin in March of 2021, which isn't that far away, about six months or so, to have three hocks along Emerald Boulevard, help people cross in a lot safer way than they have been. So that's, we spent time discussing that. And then the last event I think I'll mention is we've got the Rock Island Rail Trail that ends at Procket, but they want to extend bike trails down to Hodge Town. So Seventh and Eighth are good for that. Seventh is one way going one way to Washington downtown, and Eighth the other way. And so those will probably be ready for baseball season next spring. So if people want to ride a bike to the ballgame, they could do that. Now, some things that have been accomplished in the, the last fiscal year, installation of the Hawk system on Georgia and Line Avenue, as mentioned earlier. New bike lanes installed on North Culture from Fairway Drive to Loop 335. New bike lanes on Julian from Interstate 40 to the north. And then planning and engineering studies completed for bike lanes connecting Julian to 15th, 15th to Johnson, and Johnson to Hodge Town. So that's coming in, in the spring of 2021. So that completes my report. Any further questions? Far away.
Questions?
Howard, could y'all possibly, or you may already have a map drawn, that when you were talking about the bike, possible lanes down to the ballpark of just seeing that on a map, how, how that works? For those of us who are not great audio followers and understanders, that to see that of just how that path would work, I think that sounds like a great idea. And then wondering about, then, like the parking for the bikes, like the different bike racks and stuff, who would be responsible for purchasing those, and where would they possibly be, is, is another question.
On the subject of mine, so I've seen the map, we have a map, and Donnie Hooper understands watching this, and he could probably provide the map. Now, the cost for bike racks, we hadn't discussed that. Donnie, you got any, can you shed any light on those questions?
We do have maps created from the engineering study, and also some presentation maps as well that we have used for the committee. And we could, we could certainly get those copies to you. And really, what's going to happen, if you kind of take a helicopter look at it, you'll have one way in from the Rock Island Trail, it would be Seventh and Eighth going either way. And also, you could get through from that Julian route to 15th to Johnson to the back door of Hodge Town. So you really have quite a large loop there that, that all eventually is going to connect together. And that was, that was the goal of the, the whole project, to start that a piece at a time and to make that happen. So we can provide you with that, and I think you'll be very pleased with the, with the results of it. I might, I might add also, Howard's a little humble about this, I think. This, this committee has accomplished a lot this year, and they really have, and this is a good group to work with. They're very passionate about what they're doing, and they want to make sure that there's a, a place for pedestrian and bicycle safety from that committee and awards out there, and they know a lot about it. So they've just done a really good job, everybody on that, on that committee.
I would echo that. As I was listening to everything accomplished, you guys have gotten a lot done, and I would really pat you on the back. And I would give Donnie a pack on the, a pat on the back as well, because it, it does take the city liaison being focused and taking what he's hearing from the citizens and implementing that into actual action steps inside the city. So it's a partnership, but it appears to me like the partnership between Donnie and this committee is functioning very well. So good job, Mr. City Manager, on setting that up.
Thank you, Mayor.
I really would like to be kept apprised, and I'm sure we will be with these reports, on the safety changes on Emerald Boulevard. So I, I agree that is really one of our top priorities as far as pedestrian safety in the city, and yet one of our biggest challenges. And, but it, it's just really unacceptable to me that we continue to have deaths at that street every year, and we just say, wow, that's just so hard, we don't know what to do about it. But I, I would like to hear specific ideas, and how can we partner with TexDOT to increase safety opportunities for that particular street in our city.
Mayor, I might add, if I, if I can, that's really a multi-year project that they're working on. TexDOT has about $600 million that was dedicated for an in-the-street campaign that they're working with, and this fit right into that criteria. So we worked with them on the Hawks. Then there's a second phase that will begin, where they're going to start working on some of the crossings to make them ADA accessible, a third phase to make connectivity of the sidewalks and ADA accessible there. So it really, a large scope of, of work to be done on the Boulevard over the next three or four years, depending on the funding for that. But, but they have a, they have a very large project in place and working really well with us on it.
Thank you, Donnie. I, I know it's challenging, the crossing points are far between in comparison to other streets, and the traffic is challenging. So I agree, those are, are good steps, and we need to continue to look for even more things we can do to improve. Any other comments from the council on this? Councilmember Smith, I don't know what you're going to do this week. You don't have committee, as many committee meetings to attend, but thank you for the time that you've spent serving on those two committees and for bringing these reports.
No problem.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our regular agenda. Anything further we need to take on as questions or future agenda items from the council?
Mayor, I'd like to request a slot for an update on an outside board. We will be having our first Convention and Visitors Bureau meeting this Thursday. And so we have a full morning workshop with all of the members attending that have been appointed to the new board, and so I would love to bring back a report next Tuesday.
Wonderful. Anybody else? Okay, thank you all, that's the end of our agenda. We'll move into executive session at this time. Would the city attorney please read our language to do that?
Yes, ma'am. Pursued the Texas Open Meetings at Closed Session, the Emerald City Council was announced on September the 29th, 2020, at 2:08 PM under the following authority, Section 551.072, discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, sell, or value real property in public discussion such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we return to executive session.